Order the July meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings of this life that we enjoy, including our ability to meet here in peace tonight. Call upon you to guide us, provide this board with the wisdom and understanding so that we may make decisions. Best serve the current and future citizens of Morrisville. We also hope that you will bring comfort to those who've recently lost loved ones. Thank you for the first responders and volunteers who are helping out. We ask that you protect our armed forces and first responders throughout the world. Father, guide us better to serve you, our neighbors, and nation. Courtney, are there any changes to the agenda from your side?
No, Chairman.
We're okay with the agenda as it sits? We'll move on then. Have you had a chance to review the minutes from last month? Understand a motion to approve the June minutes?
I move the motion to approve the June minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sanjay, thank you for reminding me, in the absence of all board members. Sanjay, as our alternate, will be the voting member. Catherine Willis unfortunately is not able to be with us. She's in California. We do have a quorum. Quorum is three, but we're actually four, so we're... Members of the public, except our mayor, other than the mayor, so they come in. Got to move right ahead to item nine and then to present that.
Good evening. So tonight I'll be presenting the staff report for the payment and for a proposed text amendment addressing our payment in lieu requirements in our unified development ordinance. So just as a little bit of background for how this specific ordinance amendment has come about is that, as we know, and as you've heard me say many times, we have a lot of road improvements that are scheduled and funded, both by NCDOT and by the town, over the next 10 years or so. And so because of that, we have several of our major corridors where we have a development occurring are also scheduled to have major road projects come through that could change or have to redo improvements that development puts in. So staff began discussing with town council, actually back in the, at the 2018 Town Council Retreat, some different options to allow development to write a payment in lieu of construction of public street improvements if they're located on one of these corridors. And then September of last year, we discussed the issue again with the Town Council and took them potential options to build the text amendments around. And so the council gave direction to staff, and so now we've drafted the text amendments based on those, on that direction, and are bringing them to you tonight. So the current requirements were implemented in 2014 with adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance, and it allows the developer to request to submit payment in lieu of construction of public street improvements. And then it either, it'll either go to Town Council or the planning director, depending on the type of approval that the development requires. The requirements that are currently in the ordinance also allow Town Council to waive PIL for town projects, and it provides some general standards and process for payment in lieu of construction. The proposed amendments are to several sections. First section is Section 5.8.5, and that's just clarifying the payment in lieu of construction may be considered for off-site improvements pursuant to Section 8.1.3, which is the actual section of the payment in lieu requirements in the Unified Development Ordinance. And then in that Section 8.1.3, we have several proposed amendments. One would be granting the planning director authority to approve PIL requests if a development's located on a public street with no publicly funded improvement project. And then we also establish the PIL on public streets with planned and publicly funded improvement, improvements, and we establish standards for those. We have, we split out into two different types of developments. One for publicly funded developments, which the proposed amendments would require them to construct improvements in accordance with town or NCDOT driveway permit to provide safe ingress and egress to the site, but they would not be required to provide a payment in lieu of construction of improvements or be required to construct any improvements outside of those required for safety. Privately funded developments, on the other hand, would be required to also construct safety improvements in accordance with the driveway permit, but then would also be required to provide both a refundable and a second non-refundable payment in lieu of construction based on what they would be required to do. The refundable payment in lieu of construction would be for road improvements identified in the comprehensive plan, which is the general widening, installation of median, that type of thing. The non-refundable payment in lieu would be for any bike path improvements such as sidewalks, primarily sidewalks and multi-use paths, streetlights, conversion underground utilities, if the improvement project includes that improvement, and also median landscaping. That PIL would be non-refundable because with most of these major projects, the town does plan to have median landscaping installed at the end of the project, more than just the grass that DOT normally installs. We also, in the section, clarify that the payment in lieu funds may be used by the town, NCDOT, or by another private entity. We provide for the reimbursement of the refundable payment in lieu, which is that triggers generally once the project has started construction. And then, once the road improvement project started construction. And then we also specify that in lieu funds used for the construction will be for the amount of the in lieu payment. Essentially, what you're paying us, we will use that amount for that project. We also are proposing a new Section 8.1.4, which has a lot of the same language of Section 8.1.3, but it provides a process for providing payment in lieu of construction for private cross-access improvements, which we've been doing as a practice, but this is just institutionalizing it in the UDO.
That's sort of clarifying like the CVS situation, I guess, in the future?
Yes. Yep. It would clarify that in the future where we would actually have, if that happens under this, CVS would be funding, would be paying money for that cross-access that they didn't And here on the screen, you'll see the action items we're requesting, the consistency statement, and then recommending approval of the text amendment ordinance. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, then. Sanjay.
Maybe I just need more education on this. Could you go back to, so we are talking about projects that are going to get executed over the 10 years, right? The next 10 years.
So, I mean, this is, this text amendment, it, once it gets into the UDO, I mean, it'll be in there, so it's, I mean, the, what brought about it was the fact that we have so many improvement projects funded.
I get that.
Yes. Any project that is, and the focus is on, for the public improvement project on the public street, it'd be any project that's funded by either the town or the state. And what we generally, you know, consider to be funded projects would be if it's in the state transportation improvement program, and it's actually has funding allocated to it, and we know that it's going to get funding. So normally, that's funding allocated to one phase, to any phase of the project in the first five years of that 10-year program. And then for town projects, we would consider to be funded if we actually had town funding associated with the project, and we had a funding plan for getting the project constructed.
So, looking back in history, what percentage of projects have we started on time and completed on time? A hundred, right? 5%, 10%, 50%, 100%? You know, give me an estimate. I'm not asking for an exact number, but give an overall estimate.
That I really can't answer. I mean, since I've been here, we've, you know, most of our projects have seen some type of delays. However, if we've, you know, at the same time, once we have planned and funded a project, we still have got it under construction, have gotten it done.
I get that, but those delays are few days delays, few months delays, few years delays. Give me some kind of an estimation of, so that, here is my biggest concern.
So, I'll chime in here. So, one, the planning department doesn't have that benchmark. We haven't measured that. We would have to look into it.
Okay.
Give it to you. But specifically, some of the most recent delays, frankly, were beyond the town's control. You know, it's contractor-related. There was, so for example, you have multiple agencies involved in Morrisville Carpenter widening, and there's, you know, there's review of certain species. But while one department within it, conglomerations of departments held up some approvals we needed, we have an expiration date that we came upon, and so we had to go back and do a new environmental study for that.
Yeah.
So there's little things like that, of which you can only have it in a small window. But I think the important part here is, and this is really what it kind of boils down to, in probably the most simplistic way, is we are very carefully monitoring a lot of the legislation that is going through the system, and it's, we're getting a very clear signal sent kind of across the state. Don't take money when it's funded, or you will lose your ability to continue taking funding. So we're being very proactive and cognizant of some of the things that are going in there. And really, the genesis of this had to do with, we're losing our public works facility as part of the Morrisville Carpenter widening, and Wake County is losing their convenience center. So when we started working together, you know, working on new plans, because we know that both of our facilities will be lost as far as the widening, you know, Wake County specifically asked us the question, are you going to make us provide public funds to a publicly funded project? And so that's why we took the item two counsel at the retreat, which they asked for options, to explore options, which led us to where we are now.
Okay. I understand what you said, right? And there lies in my concern, is when I look at it from a public point of view, right? If there is a building constructed, and I can understand public funds being used for public roads is one, is a different criteria, but I'm more concerned with private construction getting a pass, if you will, in some sense, for not doing the necessary road improvements to accommodate new residents, new traffic, whatever that may be, to, and serve the communities. In other words, if they do that, and the roads are not extended or built in time, now you put the burden back on the community to live with the constraints of the road widening or the delays because of public projects being, for whatever reason, right?
Delighted. Appreciate. I appreciate this.
So what I'm really driving at is, if the delays are in the order of, let's say, few days, or let's say six months, eight months, we can all live by, right? But if it is an extended delay, then you are now putting community, you know, you're not providing value to the community. You took the funds and things like that.
So I still don't really understand the point of your question. I think the whole idea of payment in lieu is that whatever delay happens, the town has money to complete widening, and it's paid by the developer. It's paid by the developer upfront with payment in lieu. So a delay doesn't come into that particular argument?
My argument is, by taking payment of lieu, you are agreeing that he does not have to construct the road improvements right then. You are basically deferring the timeline for road construction over a later point in time, right? And by that delay, you are now contributing to the already existing problem of congestion and things like that.
I think that's where we have to rely on the discretion and the good judgment. For example, we wouldn't want to have a developer widen a street, or put some, only to find or know that in two years' time, stuff has been thrown away. And that happened on Davis, for example. I think that's the argument in favor of having payment in lieu.
Well, but for those two years, you know, you don't get the benefit of using the payment, right? So the question really is, and that's why I asked the question, is, are those delays historically up to a year, two-year timeframe? If they are more than that, if you can't estimate what is the nature of your delay, then I would rather, it's a situation like whether I have cash in hand or wait for something golden to come back, come down in 10, you know, two years down the line.
And that's where the judgment comes in, and the particular circumstance comes in.
Correct. And I'll give you examples of when we have allowed it, and when we've been asked and it's not been permitted, and when, in retrospect, we probably shouldn't have. So the easiest ones are kind of the shouldn't have, is that before we even had the payment in lieu option, it's you shall install. I mean, that was the golden rule. So for example, you can take a look in front of the post office, we've probably all visited there, and you see an extra lane of pavement that's been built in front of the post office. What should most likely have been there is a turn lane for safety, and the rest of it provided is in payment in lieu, because the pavement's just degrading, and now it will all have to be ripped up and replaced because it's substandard. Whereas we would have had money to put towards, understanding that our projects are all matching, historically, we would have had money already placed in the project by the developer, that the taxpayers aren't paying, that the developer itself is paying. So that's one of those ones where a turn lane would have made more sense, collect payment in lieu, and we hold on to it, and then we use it as part of our matching funds. The most common, honestly, one that we do payment in lieu all the time for, and this is going to be an example in airport, Boulevard. So if you head from Davis Drive to where Airport Boulevard currently terminates, we had to collect payment in lieu at that point because they could not get a permit to halfway cross a stream. So their property line is basically the center line of a stream. So we really had two options at that point. If we didn't have payment in lieu, they would build as much as they could have, and then the cost of the pavement moving forward would have been 100% the taxpayers. Instead, we collected payment in lieu, so when airport is expanded, we're going to pull from that where we collected it and then put it into the case, put it into the project. And while I appreciate that it is seen as a kind of, I think you said kind of a pass was the word that you used, this is not 100%, this is 150%. This actually costs the developer more than if we would have allowed them to construct it in the first place. Now, granted, I get if there's 10 years down the road, there's probably a cost difference. That is what there is, and there's really no great way to get around it, but it was either 100% taxpayer's cost at X years down the road, or a percentage of taxpayer cost. In these particular instances, we are collecting the PIL, so for some reason, and again, these are funded projects, so these are the ones where the money has been already allocated to a project. These aren't ones that are future on a map that have no funding. And the reason we're doing that, you know, we can't very well, with a straight fate, take money for something that's already paid. And so instead, we're holding on to it as payment in lieu, for some reason, the state says, eh, I'm not giving the money to the project, which has never happened, you know, but if that were to happen, we have it, then we can then go through and put those improvements in. But the patchwork quilt of road improvements is what we're getting, which developers have been paying their fair share in accordance to law. Big picture doesn't do a whole lot when you have 30,000 people coming in and out of our roads every single day. And so I appreciate, I appreciate all sides. And it's just trying to find a balance that isn't then basically given to lobbyists, that's not the whole story, it's a version of the story, that then will prohibit us from collecting any PIL at all on any state-funded roads. So this was the fairest version that we could come up with, that we think is long-lasting for the town as well. So we're not losing out, and then nobody's doing their fair share, as we spoke of earlier.
Go ahead.
So to that point, is there a time-based analysis where you look at, okay, you're going to pay 150% payment in lieu, and that would make sense for X amount of time? But once you cross a threshold of, certainly in six months, yeah, that makes sense. If it's going to be a project that's going to be done in six months, makes sense, hold it, give it back, let the larger project take place. But if it gets delayed and it's at three years or four years, when is the math, you know, turn the needle and it's not worth it? And, you know, would it be worth to put in a time threshold where, accept payment in lieu if it's a two-year window, if it's going to be a three- or four-year window on a planning horizon, have them build it, and then get the usability for that structure for that period of time, and then redo it at a later date?
The way, so the statutes have narrowed back of, it used to be we collect a lot of things at 150, now they've clearly state you can only do 125. So there's been changes in statute at the time, but there's not a measure. We don't have a multiplier built in, which is really what you're getting at. The cost of today was the cost 10 years from now or five years from now, which I think is a very fair statement. There is no known analysis out there, and we have not done that. I mean, the horizon for all CEI, or for all STIP projects is 10 years?
Yeah. I mean, all the projects that we have funded in the current STIP actually should be constructed within the next six to seven, fully constructed and open, should be under construction within the next three to four, maybe five years.
A follow-up. If this were to go into place, would this be only projects in the future, or would be anything that's currently underway? So it would be sort of retroactive to something that is currently in construction?
So, we cannot retroactively apply any new regulations by law. If a developer asked to have those applied retroactively, by law, we have to. If we change our regulations, statute says we have to allow them change the reg, you know, they can basically start picking from the regs, but no. So anything that has been approved, it's not even approved, accepted for review. So a project that we've accepted into our review pipeline, it would not be applicable. It's applicable to any project if its effective date is, you know, say hypothetically, August 11th, any plan that's submitted on August 11th moving forward, it would be applicable to.
So just make sure I understood that. So if somebody requests for an existing project, then it would have to be?
We'd have to consider it.
Consider it, but not actually put it in?
We can consider it. You know, payment in lieu, it's typically written as, you know, we may, it's not we shall, and so there is subjectivity to it, and we don't always grant it.
So do we have a, an understanding of, maximum case, of all projects going on, if they were all, you know, currently asked for, what would be the, you know, ultimate tally of payment in lieu collected?
We don't have that. So if we're just speaking of aviation, you have the Bainbridge project that was approved that I know we collected PIL on because they could not meet criteria to install streetlights, they couldn't install the total width of the sidewalk. So under our current regulations, we are able to collect PIL as part of that approval. We also have the rezoning recently, for that mixed use rezoning, but there's no project that's been submitted. I suspect that one may potentially fall into this, but until they officially submit a site plan, I don't know that it will. So really, at this point, we've collected PIL, and it honestly wasn't a whole lot because it is a portion of a sidewalk, as well as some traffic lights. Trying to think, if the convenience center continues to move forward, there's challenges, we would potentially collect from them. We don't pay PIL for our projects, so that wouldn't be applied, but that's for aviation. McCrimmon, everything that can be installed is being installed, actually, as part of that project. I'm just kind of going through my head. So there's, these are going to be, at this point, there's not a lot of projects, partially because sometimes it does make more sense for you to actually install. It's those ones that are kind of mid-block that don't make sense necessarily to install, but ones that are kind of at major intersections, those tend to be very logical for installation.
I had a minute to jump in on, yes.
No, and, look, I fully recognize everything that you have said. My only request is to figure out how we can put in some verbiage in these statements that kind of talk about, how do we provide value to the community, right? In other words, the statement that Tim made, if it was more than two years, we, you know, figure out some way of parameterizing how much of a delay we are going to tolerate in terms of accepting PIL or using the PIL or not. That's all I'm trying, in other words, how do we balance providing value to the community while holding off until, you know, all the projects culminate, right? That's the only part.
I think that's an industry metric that's almost like a case-by-case basis. And, you know, if you have a project that has 100 linear feet of frontage, which is not a whole lot, and we collect PIL, and they've had to put the turn lane in, which is pretty much your 100 feet, I would say in that case, there's no impact to the community. Now, if we have 1,000 linear feet of frontage, then I would say there starts to be a negative impact to the community, because that is a huge stretch where you could have, potentially, depending on location. So there's a lot of factors that go into play, and I will say, I mean, in fairness, we will earn interest on what we hold on to, and that interest is not given back to the applicant either. So it is, the way it's written, is if they provide $150,000, and the project occurs seven years from now, they get $150,000 back. So it's kind of a, I mean, so from one standpoint, is the community earning interest off of it. Nominal, when I'm sitting in traffic and I haven't gone, you know, very far in a very long period of time, or it feels like a long period of time.
I see. Getting the sense that your concern is that the developer is going to get away with something by paying PIL.
No, my concern is not that. My concern is, by accepting PILs, the timely improvements of the roads could get delayed because these are government-run projects, and government-run projects historical, right? Regardless of whether you are in the United States, or India, or some other country, are always delayed for one reason or the other, right? And if political parties change, you never know whether the funding for that project will stay or not stay or not. Now, I know that doesn't happen quite often, but that is always a possibility.
Well, if I can just address a little bit of that concern real quick. I mean, that's one of the reasons why we are requiring them to complete any safety improvements such as turn lanes. What we have seen more often than not, I mean, I think the only project that we've seen in recent memory that's done enough where it's made a significant traffic improvement outside of their site would be like Park West. But other than the large projects like the Park West, most, just about every project we have, their frontage, even if it's significant frontage, the improvement still doesn't really do anything to move traffic along. It's really, you know, pretty, almost every instance that we've had developments build their additional lane in front of their frontage, it's a turn, it is striped as a turn lane for their development anyways. And so having them build that now versus having them build a shorter turn lane that DOT says required for driveway, and give us money, and wait till a larger project comes in and fully builds out the four lanes, you're not going to see, you're not really losing, and the community's not really losing a lot of mobility in that intervening timeframe because the 300-foot lane, extra lane that's striped as their turn lane doesn't provide you, doesn't really provide additional capacity on the road. And so it's, and so that's where, you know, and then we're still requiring them to provide a PIL, which is a cost to them upfront that they put out, and they're, you know, essentially putting out, hoping they'll get it back, but they don't know when they'll get it back either. So, you know, so to that extent, I think that, you know, there's not, that's why staff doesn't have a lot of concerns about losing out. doesn't have a lot of concerns about losing out on something because we have the money. If, if the project goes away, we have the money. And if the project doesn't go away, we're not putting in improvements that are then going to have to be redone or torn out and re-improve later on either.
Okay.
Yep. Go ahead.
All right, so you kind of hit on this a little bit. I read through this stuff and I was like, it's really very technical. So the refundable, so what you're saying is when the DOT does one of these projects years down the road, if Morrisville isn't contributing money, then developer does get that money back? That's what the refundable category is in here?
The refundable category is really only for the road improvements themselves.
Right, but what I'm saying is they could put in $150,000 and then six years from now DOT widens the road and now they're going to eventually get that $150,000 back because the town didn't undertake that improvement?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want, that was the main thing that I was, I don't really see this as making it easier for people to do the payment in lieu process. It's just really clarifying what happens after. I mean, your, your stuff is sort of a whole separate kind of discussion about the overall PIL process, but all right, that was my main, I just couldn't quite parse that through everything that was in here, so thank you.
So you clarified, thanks to Lee's comment, what happens to the excess. Did I hear you say on that slide that you showed us, able to section eight, dot one, dot three brackets continue? But that includes the underground utilities? I think it was the one before that.
Yeah, and so the way the text is written is if the, if the public improvement project includes undergrounding utilities, then the development project will have to include that in their non-refundable PIL, that cost. But because we run into the problems we have with undergrounding utilities, we, we don't necessarily want to start collecting that PIL if there's no plans to actually put those utilities underground or if Duke Energy says we're not putting those utilities underground.
Thank you, Ben. And just for my own vision relearning, type one and type two subdivisions, what's the difference between those?
So the, the type one subdivisions are just the larger projects that have to go to council and get council approvals and the others are the ones that are allowed to get, that have administrative approvals as laid out in our ordinance.
I need to go back to the UDO and refresh my memory of what those are. My other comment was, and maybe it's redundant now because we've had that discussion, but close to where I live, off Davis Drive, there's that soccer facility. And when they put that in, they were required, I'm sure by the town of Cary, but a sidewalk. We had this sidewalk that was not only a sidewalk to nowhere, it was a sidewalk from nowhere. And I remember a couple of times I actually walked up Davis when Davis was walkable and got onto that sidewalk and walked to the end and then got off onto Davis and walked back. I probably about the only pedestrian who ever used that sidewalk and over time it got covered with weeds and whatever. And then when they widened Davis, the whole thing was ripped up. So that's a classic example of a real waste of a developer having to spend money to provide that particular facility, whereas if they'd had payment in lieu, it would have been a much better.
Right. And in that situation, you know, that would fall under our non-refundable payment in lieu. So the town would actually take the money that the developer paid in that case in payment in lieu and use that towards what we call our betterment cost with NC DOT to fund that sidewalk.
I have some, some really nitpicky questions and comments on your Red Lion stuff.
Okay.
Probably for the sake of the other members here, if you could spend a few minutes with me afterwards, we'll go through those.
Okay.
It's just wording and how things have turned out. You know, we talk about one thing, but we haven't introduced it yet because the orders changed, that kind of thing. But other than that, I don't think I have any potential comments, so. More or?
No, I think, I think, no, I, like I said, I don't necessarily have issues with this as long as, the only point I wanted to make was account for providing value to the, to the community members sooner than later. That's all, right? As long as we keep that in mind in all the projects we do, that's, that's the goal it should be. I mean, as a government organization, yes, nice to get an interest, but that's not the primary goal of a government institution. Our government's primary goal is to provide value to the community as fast as we can.
And to make, just make sure it doesn't trample all over those.
Well, it's, you know, every time I hear that state wants to do something, I sometimes wonder why the heck do we bother to even have town councils? Let the state manage everything, right? Because then what does town do?
I apologize for introducing that, let's move on. So because this is a change to the UDO, basically, I think we have to come up with a consistency statement.
That is correct. So for the consistency statement, you can just read actually what's on the screen and then for the ordinance, you can basically make a simple motion for that one.
Call for a volunteer to do just that.
Thank you, Lee. Okay. As required by General Statute 160A-383, I hereby move to recommend approval of Resolution 2019-106-0 of the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the adoption of a planned consistency statement, review statement for text amendments to the UDO related to payment in lieu of construction of public street improvements, AMN 19-02, based on the following. Proposed UDO text amendments are consistent with the comprehensive plan and are in the public interest because the proposed amendments support the following policies in the town's adopted land use plan. Policy 1A, promote growth and development that contributes to and builds upon the town's overall image as a well-planned, attractive, livable and unique community in the Triangle Region. Policy 1C, plan, develop and support vibrant, walkable gathering places at Morrisville's historic crossroads. Policy 2A, promote development that fosters a sense of place by improving the character of the built environment, including visually appealing buildings, streetscape amenities and public spaces. Policy 2D, clearly communicate the character of development that is encouraged in the town, including land use, design and development standards, utility extensions and transportation needs design. Policy 3B, actively encourage pedestrian-oriented development through site design, building orientation, interconnected parking facilities and streetcape improvements, as well as Goal One, improve transportation mobility of the town's strategic plan to enhance transportation options through improved accessibility, connectivity and collaboration, specifically Objective 1.2, which is to leverage resources through partnerships with other government entities and the private sector.
So I second for that recommendation.
I second.
Question, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Part two as well, don't we? Yeah.
We arrest and have another volunteer.
I will read it. Ordinance 2019-106-0, I hereby recommend that the Town Council approve ordinance 2019-106-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving text amendments to the UDO related to the payment in lieu of construction of public street improvements, AMN 19-02.
Second to that motion. Motion and a second to recommend approval. Every say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Jump to item 11.
Good evening. So we've had lots of activity in the planning department. We've had four new projects that were both site plan, construction plan combined submitted. That includes a new religious facility at 910 Church Street. Formerly the Wood Partners, the rezoning, they've officially submitted Rush Hour Two, which is an indoor go-kart facility, it may have some other activities. That has been submitted on Airport Boulevard and it's at the intersection of Airport and the planned east-west connector, which will, a portion of that will be built as part of the project. And then Wilson Road subdivision, this is not the same Wilson Road subdivision that came in many years ago. Unfortunately, we have no control over what they name them and they typically are very generic in nature. But it's a small little parcel that used to have a home on it that's between Fairbanks and Wilson Road. It has no more than, I believe, like five lots that's located on it. We also had a couple of projects approved. One of them was Beef Safe Storage, that's the former Expedex facility on Morrisville Parkway. And Thornbury was approved, it's the subdivision formerly known as the Stadler Meyer project across the street from this building. It's right at the intersection of Morrisville Carpenter Road and Town Hall Drive. That has been approved as well. There were not actually any town council approvals. It's probably one of the slowest months planning's had with them and I don't know, five years I feel like. And then another big item which each of you were involved in that were available is the public transit study where there's the joint work session that was sent out. So those are some of the latest happenings, or should I say the happenings within June. Moving forward, if each of you did not receive a postcard in the mail, you should have some time last week about the affordable housing survey and I believe I sent an email out as well. If you haven't had a chance to take that survey, I encourage you to do so. So far, the response on it is really good. I would say as a general rule, we get around 250 respondents to our survey. We were already close to 150 as of yesterday. So we're on track to where we typically are, which is a good thing. I can't say there was necessarily, for the most part, I'm not surprised by some of the responses. I was probably respeiced by one, but I'm going to hold off on my, what I found that was surprising until it's over to see if that carries forward throughout the final survey. But you know, some people are strongly in support of it, some people have no desire for it. And then there was kind of some in the opening question, some heartfelt stories for people who live here who would love to stay here but can't. So it was interesting. And then it also, there were some stories, our little nuggets of info about how people work in RTP. Near recent graduates, a lot of student loan debt and multiple of them are piling in together in an apartment so they can have a close commute and afford to live. But it's really kind of a challenge for them anywhere, but they opt to do it here. So where they're getting a three-bedroom apartment and three of them are splitting it. So I know we're reaching lots of different people, which I think was really good. We've had, most of the comments primarily from the US, but we've had some from Europe and some from, I'm not sure where. So, you know, I think a lot of people do travel a lot, but get our, you know, the next week in Morrisville and things along those lines. So we see people tend to fill out, especially since we have so many people that just have an international basis, whether it's work or, you know, heritage. So that's, that's really kind of trekking along. I did send an email for everybody. I know I heard from one person that couldn't attend, just as a placeholder for the work session. That's going to be a joint work session. This one's going to be a little bit different, so I haven't established a time, but it's in a normal town council meeting. So typically it's not at the beginning when they start at six. It's going to be somewhere further, but until that's a full agenda, I won't really have a good idea of the time. It's just more of an FYI for each of you that it most likely won't be at the beginning because they're traditionally held at the end. But there's starting, I would say, first part of August, there's a work session related to some type of planning item on many, 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 you'll have land use plan and there's affordable housing, land use plan pickpicks up again and there's some transportation items. So we're trekking along. Some other really good news is Ben presented on Tuesday, the updated, based off all the revisions requested by council to the comprehensive transportation plan. They affirmed that it was correct. So we are working on getting hard copies printed. I know one person that probably wants a hard copy, but if anybody else wants a hard copy, let me know and happy to provide one for you. You know, it's, it's going to be larger, so it's just a preference and that's fine. But that's really it from my end, so I'm going to turn it back over to the chairman.
Courtney, while you're there, if I may, I have a couple of questions on, on your items. Explain to me again where the Rush Hour Two site is?
Yeah, so if, and I can kind of probably give you general benchmarks, it's on Airport Boulevard. So if you...
Are you between 54 and the airport?
It is between 54 and the airport.
There's three sections of it.
And it's in the section that has the most, what used to be homes. There's that section that really hasn't developed yet that has, historically, there's some older manufactured homes sitting out there. It's in that segment to kind of give you an idea.
Right next to the Shell.
It's before you even get to McCrimmon, I believe.
Oh, God.
So between McCrimmon and like auto, the auto place kind of, I mean, that's probably the biggest benchmark I can give you is you're really driving that direction towards the airport.
While you're in that quadrant of your, Wilson Road subdivision, very small, was there any impact on the underground utilities?
Any overground utilities, I believe where they are, most likely were just a line that fed to the old home that was there. If anybody has been back in Wilson Road, the old part, as you drive through, has, well, it's the same road, but you're really taking a hard left, almost like you're at a stop sign. It's the parcel directly to the right as you take the hard left and you're heading to Cary Parkway, which Wilson Road does connect to now. I believe it's five? It may be more than one parcel they have assembled. I don't believe it is. There's an L-shaped parcel at the very end of Fairbanks. So...
Looks like at least a couple are, I guess, facing on Wilson Road and the other two are coming, you know, off of Fairbanks.
That's correct.
Off the, off the...
There's the topography of that site, great for sledding if there weren't trees in the way is the best way I can describe it. They initially had, they were trying to connect Fairbanks all the way to Wilson and there was no way to engineer it in such a way that a fire truck can make the dip in the road. So what we opted to do is to cul-de-sac and while it's going to be a fairly large cul-de-sac, then have the other two homes face Wilson. It just was the most logical option due to some topographical challenges out there.
In your top right quadrant, Thornbury, not a major site plan?
No, it's actually, it was a minor site plan in a type-two subdivision because as part of the rezoning, they were required to meet all of our architectural standards. And if you meet all the architectural standards, you're approved by staff. If you don't meet the architectural, regardless of size of the development, you have to be approved by council.
That's why it didn't come back to us?
That is exactly why it did not come back to you.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
So more comments, Tim?
No comments, just maybe Ben, if you could answer, when the, is there a plan to change the timing of this streetlight? Is NC DOT looking at that? During peak hours, the intersection gets backed up a whole lot. Are they considering changing the timing of that traffic light?
We, I've talked with, it's actually Town and Cary operates that signal because it's on their system. We've gotten obviously many complaints, not only during this period that we have the road closure, but just over the years. And we've talked to Cary over the years too. There's really nothing more that can be done at that signal, unfortunately. That signal has the fire department preemption, it also has rail preemption on it. It's also tied in with the signal at Aviation Parkway and NC 54 and tied in with the signal at Morrisville Carpenter Road and Davis Drive. And so it's, it's fully coordinated. The biggest issue and the reason we continue to see the problems we do at that intersection is because... is because Morrisville Carpenter Road itself does not have enough capacity for the traffic that's on it. So with the four-laning of Morrisville Carpenter Road, that should add that capacity, and we should see those delays go down quite a bit. They may not completely disappear, but it should go down quite a bit. And we'll also, as part of that project, we'll have dual left turn lanes off of Town Hall Drive onto Morrisville Carpenter Road as well, which should help with the delays on Town Hall Drive.
And I should say, too, just sitting through multiple light cycles, if people adhere to the traffic laws.
Of course.
That would help as well. I know for me, I had to sit through four lights and I couldn't move because everybody was blocking the intersection.
Yep.
Which prohibited me from even pulling out. Person behind me didn't much care and went around, but, you know, that's.
You see, and then uptick in tickets on Block the Box and stuff like that, or?
For this go-around, I haven't, I've seen officers sitting out there and have actually told people to turn around and go sit back at the end of the line. If that is not encouragement enough, I don't, I, that to me would be more painful than whatever citation possibly could have been issued.
I know.
Because there was a person behind me, and they were literally, I was able to get in, and then like three more came behind me, and really probably only one should. The last one, it was a knock on the window, and you could see, like, the person's like, are you kidding me? And I'm thinking, lesson learned. That was, again, that, the time that you would have had lost, since it was already backed up to the traffic circle almost, I mean, admittedly, I smiled to myself because I had sat through so many waiting, but, I mean, that is part of the challenge.
Yeah, no, I, I was just looking for.
People are blocking, and then nobody can even get out.
Yeah, and that's true everywhere where traffic is a big mess. Anyway, thank you.
Anji, so I'd like to thank Marty for, at the very last minute, under short notice, printing a couple of pages for me so that I could look at the nitty-gritty details of that text amendment. You did that so quickly, I appreciate that. Tim, I was going to put you on the spot. I know you have emailed to Courtney about maybe considering some of the long-term impacts of what we're doing, and I wondered if you would like to think about that, perhaps with me and Courtney, and present something at the next monthly planning board to make an item, and then maybe we'll discuss that a month or two after that. So sort of get ready to talk about it next month, and then maybe talk about it the month after that. Absolutely. I think that would be very valuable, because, you know, the role of our board has changed from more history lessons, you know, when we looked to see where the dumpster was going to be located, to a much more strategic, longer-term thinking, so I think. And congratulations on nearly getting the transportation plan through.
Really, it's Ben who deserves, you know, fist bump, high-five, whichever you prefer, a toast. He put a lot of time and energy into that.
As far as the role internal, I believe, so.
You probably was going to say, you know, probably, and it's probably a little more than that, too, but yeah.
Thank you. So I think we'll still make it within that. Any other comments? Item 15. Ever say aye?
Aye.
Where'd you?